All right, well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you Penny for the warm introduction. It's great to be with all of you. As a candidate, a couple of years ago, I participated in debates facilitated by the League of Women Voters, and it's wonderful to be back with you in my new role as school board member, along with our interim superintendent, Dr. Bagula. So one of us is a doctor, Penny, but it's not me. It is Dr. Bagula. We're excited to be with your committee today and are really grateful for the League's partnership on our new Unified for Democracy initiative, which is helping our students and families become more civically engaged. So thank you, thank you for your partnership on that. Our work to improve outcomes for students all across San Diego depends on support and collaboration with organizations like yours. We value the input of community members and are committed to upholding your vision and values and ensuring our school system is honoring both those things. Go to the next slide. So you already shared a beautiful and generous introduction. You heard a little bit about me and about Dr. Bagula, and I'll share just a little more. I've been on the school board for about eighteen-ish months and currently serve as our board president. And in addition to working with my fellow trustees and with Dr. Bagula to lead our district, as you heard, I also serve as vice chair of the state's Children and Families Commission, which you may also know as First Five California. And it's really an honor to be able to do work at the state level focused on babies and young children, so pregnant, supporting pregnant parents, and then babies zero, all the way up to five years old. And then getting to continue that work, thinking about our youngest children. So in San Diego Unified, we have preschool, transitional kindergarten, all the way up to 12th grade, and even have some programs that support students after those grades. And so it's exciting to be able to be part of work happening across the continuum of students' lives and thinking about how these things intersect. I also run my own social impact nonprofit consulting firm. And as you heard, I'm a mom of two daughters who attend our public schools. So I have a daughter who's now in first grade at one of our dual immersion schools. So she's in one of our Spanish immersion programs. And then I have a sixth grader who is in middle school. So through my kids, this work is really personal to me, and not just for my own children, but because I'm committed to ensuring all of our kids can lead thriving lives. I'm a fourth-generation San Diego Unified graduate myself. You heard I was a public school teacher. I taught elementary school, the master's, not a doctorate, in education and social policy from Northwestern. But enough about me, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bagula to introduce herself.
And I am such a fan of Shayna's work and Shayna's vision that I know she's going to get some honorary degrees, doctorates, I'm sure. So thank you for the warm welcome and also for the introduction. I am a very proud San Diego native. I will say, I'd like to share this piece. I come from a very traditional family, and so as a young woman, I was required to stay in San Diego. So I did my studies here. I went to UCSD for my bachelor's degree and then did my master's degree and doctorate at the University of San Diego, but am a proud product of our public education system in the county, not San Diego Unified. But San Diego Unified did sponsor both my teaching credential and my administrative credential. And so I always hold that investment, and I always say I want to make sure that they get a return on their investment. One thing that I do like to share about myself is I love school. I love education, I love teaching and learning. And so when I speak to young people, I say, after high school, I actually went to school for seventeen years. I will continue to go to school. I was just accepted in a Yale Broad Fellowship. I'm calling it superintendent's school, but I'm going to be participating in that. And I always believe that you stay current with teaching and learning, with all current research and pedagogy, because it's so important. But really, education is one of my favorite, not only to study, but places to be. And so that's exactly what I want to model for children and for our students across San Diego. That public education is a beautiful vehicle to change your life and your trajectory. And so whatever I can do to help classrooms and classroom teachers and families really just meet the goals that they have, to live a choice-filled life, is really my goal as your interim superintendent.
Thank you, Fabi. And before we jump into our presentation, I'd like to share the agenda we have for the next thirty minutes. So we'll start with me providing you with an overview of who and what San Diego Unified is, tell you about the new student outcomes-focused governance model we're using to meaningfully and really measurably improve student outcomes, particularly for kids who have all too often fallen through the cracks. And then you'll hear from Fabi about targeted work we're doing to support student wellness, multilingual learners, early childhood education, and students receiving special education services. I know these were some of the topics that you were most interested in hearing about. And if we don't tackle some of the things you're most interested in following our presentation, we'll have time for Q and A and really look forward to your questions. And I think it's important to really frame who we are, what we are, because I think some people think they know San Diego Unified, but we're not really the same old San Diego Unified. So from the district's humble beginnings in 1854, which I was sharing with Dr. Bagula yesterday, she said 1854. It must be that that old crumbling building out her window. And I said, yeah, I think that's it. So we started in 1854 with one rented building and one teacher. Since then, San Diego Unified has grown to serve nearly ninety-five thousand students in hundreds, or nearly two hundred schools with thousands and thousands of staff members. And while we've seen some declines in enrollment in recent years due to things like demographic shifts, the high cost of housing, and competing educational options locally, San Diego Unified remains the second-largest school district in the state of California. And it's not just kindergarten through 12th grade anymore. As I mentioned a little earlier, we're proud to be a leader in early education, offering a free full-day transitional kindergarten program to all four-year-olds and providing a high-quality educational experience, which is not only great for kids, but I can speak as a mom myself, it's really decreasing the burden of paying for preschool or childcare for nearly five thousand families. So we see this as really benefiting the whole child and whole family, and that's really what we're all about. And over the last, what, one hundred and seventy years, who we serve and how we serve has changed a lot, too. So as you can see on the screen, these are just a few highlights. But one of the things that we are most proud of is the diversity of the students we serve. Our students come from one hundred and sixty-three different countries, speak more than sixty languages and dialects. More than half of our kids come from low-income households. We have one of the largest military-connected student populations in the country. And we are committed to providing rigorous, engaging, meaningful instruction to our students. So we have eight international baccalaureate schools, twenty-five language immersion programs. I told you, one of my own daughters participates in one, and I think Dr. Bagula's child attended one as well. Just last night, actually, we received a report on our college career and technical education programs. We are really leading in that area as well, not just thinking about what our kids need today, but really setting them up for success, for that choice-filled future you heard Dr. Bagula refer to. We want to make sure our students have experiences today preparing for the careers of tomorrow. And we know that it's not just about what's happening inside the classroom that matters, that our kids have challenges and need our support. And so we have school-based health centers. We have what are referred to as community schools that are providing wraparound services for students and their families. And we're providing free meals. I know that's come up, I think, in the presidential campaign with Governor of Minnesota saying, we provide free meals. Well, guess what? In San Diego Unified, we too are providing free nutritious breakfast and lunch every day to thousands and thousands of students. And lastly, and really importantly, as we think about not just what kids need, but what their families need to support their children, we're providing after-school care and enrichment for nearly twelve thousand students all across the district at every single elementary and K through eight school. And we know that that isn't happening everywhere, and it's something we're particularly proud of. So I just told you about the money we're spending, about the people we're employing, all of our incredible programs and services, and about the kids in our district. But the reality is, you know, I could say it's all amazing, and it's all perfect, and it's all wonderful. But the reality is that despite our commitment to fostering welcoming and belonging, offering rigorous instruction, and meeting the needs of the whole child and their families, there are still many students across San Diego Unified who are not reaching their full potential because our system has limited their access to educational justice. And I think for a long time, those were things we didn't want to say out loud. But we think it's important to say it because we actually believe we can make a difference. About a year ago, the board and district leaders decided that we weren't satisfied with the outcomes our students were achieving. So we solicited input from the community. We've now set measurable goals and have adopted a new framework that reflects a new level of accountability, transparency, and really a commitment to excellence in our board governance. And one of the things we recognize is that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors do. Our board recognizes and recognized through the work that we've done over the last year that our previous governance and accountability practices weren't yielding the results we seek for our kids, what our students want for themselves, and what families want for their children. And rather than point fingers at all the other people and all the other things beyond our control when it comes to unsatisfactory student outcomes, our boards decided to take accountability and action to achieve the change that we seek for all students. And, you know, I don't want to say that we don't have students that are doing incredible things and achieving great things. But until we can say that a hundred percent of students are achieving what they want and being set up for success to lead that choice-filled life, we won't be satisfied. And so again, we know that student outcomes will not change until adult behaviors do. And we know that those are our behaviors. Those are the behaviors of the board and the behavior of district leaders. And so that's why our board has shifted from being adult inputs-focused. So that means counting all of the things that adults do, all of the services we provide, to really narrowing our focus on four specific student outcome goals, really understandings what students know and are able to do. And I'll tell you a little bit about that. So we have adopted, and I'll share with you on the next slide, what our goals and guardrails are to guide our work for the next six years. But I want to make sure you understand what I mean when I say goals and guardrails. So goals are smart. That means they are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound measures of specific student outcomes. And they describe our school district's priorities for the next six years. And as I shared, this isn't just what the school board decided was important. We engaged in extensive community listening. We spoke to parents, to students, to community groups. We conducted a robust survey. And based on what we heard, we defined goals for the district. And what we are committed to doing is using these goals to guide resource allocation. So the first priority, as we're deciding where to put our money, as we're working through the budget process, the first priority is to achieve the results we've identified in these goals and in the guardrails. And the guardrails, different from goals, which are measurable student outcomes, really describe how we achieve these student outcomes. They describe what the superintendent and really what the entire school district shouldn't do and shouldn't allow in pursuit of the district's student outcomes. Right? So if you think about, we want to boost literacy achievement, but we don't want the superintendent to do that at the expense of student motivation or at the expense of not being a good communicator with the entire district. So those guardrails are how we achieve the goals and the things we don't want to do to achieve them. And again, these guardrails are based on the community's vision and inform how we're going to meet the goals. And as you heard, we engage in community listening. We received lots of feedback and adopted, just a few weeks ago, the goals and guardrails that you see on this slide. And while each goal listed here seems like a broad category, each one has very specific metrics that we will use to drive impact for students and which the board is going to use to hold ourselves accountable to the public. So for each goal, we have a specific starting point and ending point with numeric benchmarks for where students are today, where we want them to be at the end of six years. And then we also have a series of interim goals and guardrails that inform where we should be by the end of this year and what we expect to happen, and frankly, what we think needs to happen in order to achieve those long-term goals. So as you can see on the screen, we're focused on student wellness. We believe that when we see students who are well, who are happy, who are thriving, who are joyful, who are resilient, we also have students who achieve academic success and are college and career-ready. So again, the goals are in the areas of student wellness. Our second goal is focused on boosting literacy or communication skills. The third goal is around problem-solving skills, and we're specifically going to be measuring mathematics outcomes. And lastly, looking at college and career readiness. It's not just about what's happening in the classroom today, but are we setting every single student up for success over the long term? And then, as you can see in the guardrails, this is how we want to achieve the goals. We want to do it with an effective communication system with students and families and board members and the public. We want to make sure students are motivated to learn, that they don't feel forced to do the work or take that test, but they're really excited about showing up at school, that they are engaging meaningfully in the lessons they're learning, and that those lessons feel relevant to them. And it means it's not just about what's happening inside the classroom. Often, we find motivation comes from participating in athletics or leadership programs and a variety of other extracurriculars. So we're thinking about all of those things. And the last guardrail is, we don't want to forget about economic self-sufficiency and about financial literacy. One of the things we heard loud and clear from the community when we asked about your priorities, your vision, your values, was students need to be able to take care of themselves when they graduate. They need to know about personal finance. They need to know how to manage their money. And they need to be set up for economic self-sufficiency when they graduate, when they start working, are in apprenticeship programs, or are attending college. And so we're really committed to moving the needle in that regard as well. And I will tell you, for those of you who want to follow along, over the next six years, we will be on a very regular basis updating the public on our progress against these goals. It's going to be very clear, very transparent. As I shared just yesterday, we received a report on college and career readiness. Later in the year, we'll hear about literacy, we'll hear about mathematics, we'll hear about economic self-sufficiency. So join us at our board meetings or watch on the live screen if you want to see how we're doing. And we'll be sharing the results also on our website. But again, it's really important to us that we are transparent. We have nothing to hide because we actually believe, together with community, we can achieve these things. So we are excited about the work that is just beginning and the alignment that's happening, not just at the board level, but all the way down to our schools and into each classroom. But I have talked way too much, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Bagula, to Fabi, to tell us more about the details of how we're going to achieve these things.
Thank you, President Hazen. And before I go to the next slide, one of the things that I know President Hazen said is this notion of accountability and transparency. And I think it's very important as we greet and welcome students and teach them for the year that we show value and growth for the year that they're in our classrooms. And so this is a way of monitoring those systems and mechanisms. But we also want to make sure that it's about growth and development for all teachers as well. We recognize that there's a lot of needs in the classrooms. And so how are we systemically organizing ourselves to support each other? And so just as President Hazen said, and I actually spoke about this this morning, is we are going to set out a specific website with our goals and our guardrails, where you can actually see how we're monitoring across time. And what I also would like to see is the money invested in these goals. And so this notion of both accountability and transparency is currently being developed alongside these goals and guardrails. Now, I'm going to go on to the next slide, and it's going to have a little bit of education jargon. So I'm going to tell a little story before I go into the slide. In the midst of, I like to share the story, in the midst of the pandemic, when we were not supposed to leave our home, I remember thinking, I'm going to get really healthy. I'm going to make sure I garden outside. I'm going to make sure I cook breakfast every morning. I'm going to make sure I read a book and I get some sun. And so I even bought a habit journal and wrote down all these healthy habits I wanted. Well, when I got to about twenty-five, I, of course, barely did one every day. And so I kept thinking about this notion of, I can't say I'm going to do twenty-five, that's not realistic. And that kind of echoed my own experience. I was a principal for ten years, and there are some plans that are necessary for running both a school and a school district. A school has a single plan for student achievement. A school district has an LCAP. Usually, the school board has some sort of plan or device or notion of what they want to achieve. Then there's usually a superintendent's evaluation. Well, when I was a principal, I remember thinking, well, I have my six goals, and the LCAP has about twenty, and the board has another six, and the superintendent has another six. And it felt just like that habit journal, where it was too many to do all at the same time. And so one of the beautiful things that I'm actually really proud of is not only about the accountability and transparency, but this alignment and cohesion. And so what the board received during their listening sessions with the communities they serve is aligned to our LCAP, which is our district plan of action, which is also aligned with our single plan for student achievement for schools. All of these plans are aligned. We're all facing, I like to say, we're all facing in the same direction, headed towards the same goals, with enough nuance, because as you saw, we're a very large school district, with enough nuance to make it personalized for the geographic region that the school is in. And so that's something that I really appreciate. The other thing that happened with these plans, and I'm going to say unfortunately, when you have that many goals, at a certain point, they become compliance documents. And so people were creating them, they were cutting and pasting these documents. They became very long, and so we wanted to breathe life back into them. We started to have the whole system shift of like, let's make these plans meaningful. They really should be coming from the community. We should be having inputs and outputs, but also measurable outcomes here. And so how might we use them? And I even saw principals going from, wait, you're reading our plans? To, oh, yes, you're reading our plans? To, great, I'm glad you're reading our plans because I actually want to see progress with children. And so really love this transformation to meaningful plans, but more importantly, the alignment and cohesion, that we're all speaking the same language, we all have the same goals, and we're all looking at data across the whole year in order to ensure that we're making progress for those goals. So that is something we're very proud of. I want to speak specifically to wellness because this one is a pretty large category. And as President Hazen said, of course, we value wellness because it's about the whole child, but also the whole family and the community. The notion of nutrition and mental health services and expanded learning, before and after-school programs and transportation, all of those things matter and contribute to the overall wellness of a child coming to our school. But one of the things that happens, or that happened, and I'm going to say this, and you're going to get a little bit about my opinion. After the post-pandemic education, system needs are very different. What you read in the news about mental health and anxiety from our young people is very real. And so there is a need to think differently about how we provide the support for young people that are becoming, you know, adults. I like to say, we have the responsibility of educating them, but we're also co-raising them and ensuring that we're building healthy human beings across our system. And so we have to pay attention to that growth. Now, at this point right now, because, and this is part of what I love, because I love ideas and I love progress. We do know how to do wellness in a very traditional sense. We have counselors at schools. We even grew our allocation for each school for counseling time. We have programs to teach social, emotional lessons. We have these traditional sort of mechanisms that schools have always had. At the same time, we also understand that there's all these other needs, that post-pandemic wellness means different things. And so while we're trying to make sure that we're addressing the progressive needs and really thinking about, and this is a part that I love, we're really thinking about how do we ensure that children come to school and experience joy of learning? Because, I mean, I described that I love school. So seventeen years after my, you know, high school, I still went because I love it. And I think learning is social. I don't know about you, but when I read a book that I love, I want to go talk about it. Sometimes when I hate the book, I want to go talk about it, too. And so how are they experiencing that joy? And how are we measuring that joy? But also, how are we ensuring that children show up to school and experience that joy of learning? And so as we are still offering the traditional sort of mechanisms of how we know how to address social, emotional needs, at the same time, we're pushing ourselves in our entire system to address the needs post-pandemic. What we did pre-pandemic is not good enough anymore. So we have to get smarter about the types of services and how we relate to a sort of a continuum of service along the age groups that we serve, which are, as President Hazen said, universal TK, so four, three, four-year-olds, all the way to graduation. And so that's something that we're really working hard to think about and what it might look like. I also did want to talk specifically about some student populations. There was questions being posed about three very specific student populations. We have our early learning, so all of our efforts in order to ensure that our children are not only prepared, but I also appreciate that it's also a service to both families and communities. We understand we have working families. We want to make sure that we help them, and that as we help them, we also are educating their children. And so going to talk a little bit about early learning. We have a lot of languages. We represent a beautiful tapestry here in San Diego Unified of languages and dialects. And so how are we ensuring that we're supporting our multilingual learners and then specifically our students receiving special education services? The next few slides will seem a little busy, but it's because there is a lot of information. So first of all, our universal transitional kindergarten or early childhood, there's about four thousand eight hundred and ten UTK students across our entire school system. We're really proud in being one of the first school districts that offer this whole district in California. We also have a model where we have two classroom teachers per classroom. There is a preschool teacher and also a teacher. I don't like to say this, but I'm going to because this is actually how it's operating because I believe they're both teachers. But the preschool credential is very different than a teaching credentials, but there's representation of both. And we believe that both are really, really important in this design because we want to honor the age group that's coming in and the expertise of a preschool teacher, and then also ensure that also our education system is represented there. We also do offer state preschool. We have six hundred and thirty-five students in that system. But what we see here is really a large investment in ensuring that the beginning of an academic journey is something that we're really thinking about. So how do we welcome our families? How do we ensure, again, I'm going to keep talking about joy, but how do we ensure that our little ones begin school with the level of joy of skipping to class? and coming in and really being age appropriate? So I know, I know for like my favorite researchers for early learning are people like Katz who promote play. And with, with this age group, Phillips that believes that early learning investment is also a way to make sure that in the long run, we see a lot of beautiful academic achievement from children that begin early on. And then Cool, who talks about the language acquisition that happens in early childhood and how important it is to-
You're froze, you're frozen. We can't hear you.
Oh, okay.
I hear you perfectly. I'm wondering if maybe it's-
Oh, it might be my, might be my device. Sorry.
All right. I was just talking about some researchers that we love that are, is, we're, we're based our, our work in, which is mostly age appropriate play. Because I'm a big believer that children are children and so they, they should come in and experience that and they learn through that. That investment in early childhood education yields lots of investment in the later years as we prepare for their scholarly journey. And then Cool, who talks about the language acquisition. I have, remember those billboards that said, students enter with 50,000 words in, in households that have a different income? My son, when he was five, he would say, how many words do I know, mom? So they're paying attention to all of these things. And so I think it's important. But, but one of the things that we're seeking to do that we don't yet have, and I know the team wrote kindergarten readiness, is really thinking about how are we measuring our impact from all of these resources, but all of these investments? And so we want to make sure in this notion of not only accountability and transparency, but really take paying close attention is, does this effort really yield the, the academic journey that we're, we're talking about and investing in? So that's something that's coming that we're devising and creating. We also have lots of multilingual learners and I really appreciate the way that we, the, the label for a long time was very deficit minded. And so that's something that we keep trying to press is these are children that are acquiring another language, but they're bilingual children and we should also be celebrating the fact that they speak more than one, one tongue. So we have over 14,000 of them, our top five languages. So there are 77 total languages, but our top five are Spanish, Vietnamese, Haitian, Creole, Tagalog and Russian. And I know we have dual language schools. I've always wanted to open up a Vietnamese dual language school. I got as close as hiring two teachers and I felt worried about opening up a school with only two teachers. I was too worried to do that, but I digress. We also have a goal and this is something that as President Hazen said, this notion of having goals and guardrails is not, is not only being picked up by our entire system with that alignment and cohesion, but departments are also starting to set goals because they want to measure impact and want to pay, pay very close attention to the work that they're doing. And so there is a test that English language learners or multilingual learners take every year called the LP, where they're supposed to acquire one level of language acquisition. This test does test their listening, hearing, speaking, reading and writing. And so we have 54.8 of our multilingual learners will increase one level of LPI and we, we are setting a target of about a 3% growth. Now this is something that I'm appreciating because as we move over to not only accountability and transparency, there's a learning curve for us as, as executives, as leaders of ensuring that we are setting smart goals and that we recognize that we're supposed to have a year's worth of growth in, with every student. We do have some beautiful things that we're trying out. We are trying out a different way of providing professional learning and professional development for schools. So we strengthen the language acquisition during regular instruction or tier one instruction. For a long time, we did not have a way to measure language acquisition. I know I was principal, as I shared, for about 10 years and I sought three different ways to do it and I was never satisfied with, with the test. And so I'm really excited that we have a formative assessment that will inform us how well students are doing in acquiring language. And then this other piece that we just did is we, we saw that we were welcoming a lot of families from different diverse countries. And so we wanted to make sure that as they came in, we were not only welcoming them, but providing them a center for support. And so we offered, we opened up a newcomer center for our high school students that offers supports academically, socially and emotionally. And for example, I know one of them even has a food pantry and a clothing pantry as a wraparound service to welcome any new, new families from other countries. And lastly, I had to move this over, sorry. And lastly, students receiving special education services. This is a, a large population. We have 17,656 students with individual educational plans. This is about 18% of our students. There are many classrooms across the entire system and I know we just have new leadership in that department. And one of the things that I've been talking to them about, again, in this notion of ensuring that departments also have smart goals and are also held accountable for their work, is they're developing a plan of action for the next three years of what is it that they want to transform, what are the goals that they are setting? And so one very specific goal is that they're setting is to make sure that they have a continuum of care and curriculum across the mild, moderate and moderate severe populations across the entire system. That's quite a lot of work, but it's very necessary work. Because what happens is there's a lot of variation in the level of services that students receive. And that, in my opinion, when there's a lot of variation of variety, that's where cases of injustice and inequities arise. And so how are we making sure that our schools have the supports that they need? Our teachers have the curriculum that they need, but also that our students receive the needs that they, that their own disability or their, their own, I'm going to say, yeah, their own individualized education plan require. And so in general, we have mild, moderate programs, extensive support needs and STARS, and then along with a few specialized programs in our school systems that we provide if, if the children need it. So those are a couple of different student populations, but also keeping ourselves again accountable for a year's worth of growth whenever they're in our schools. I always say a year's worth of growth is the minimum. And so that's actually one of the things that I know I like to say, we have to adopt this notion of continuous improvement until 100% of our kids, 100% of the time are able to reach that choice filled life. I am going to say, we're going to go into Q and A and thank you. So I'll stop sharing my screen and give the microphone over.
Thank you very much. It's very informative. So what I guess I'm going to ask, well, maybe I'll ask a first question and then you guys raise your hands, please, if you have questions. Oh, okay. So I know Whittier is your, and you had it on your system, your school for the most severe youngsters. I also know that the principal left, there's not enough staff and it's actually a disaster right now. It's a mess. So I hate to be so direct, but my real question is, what are you doing regarding Whittier? And I just, it sounds like many of the special needs programs are really short staffed and you're having a lot of issues right now with them.
I agree on Whittier. I was actually very concerned to hear that. And so one of the things that happened is strengthening the relationship between the area superintendent who oversees that school and also our special education program. So I'm going to call it, for lack of a better word, all hands on deck. And so we made sure that it was staffed, but staffed appropriately with all of the needs. And then we brought back the retired administrator who was the, the principal there for many years, Janice Von Arx. She's there now and we're doing a search for principals. I believe that interviews happen next week. One of the things though, that I want to make sure continues to happen is yes, there's all hands on deck and we're trying to hire. But again, in this notion of accountability and transparency is what are, are all of these efforts, all of these efforts to support these students, are they the right efforts? Are, are we getting the right level of impact and support that are necessary? Are we making sure that both the children and our teachers remain safe and are able to do their job? And of course, that students are learning. And so there is going to be a plan of action. I know, I want to make sure that the principal is hired before we actually publish that plan. I want to make sure that whoever is hired to lead that school has their own say in leadership before we say this is the plan. I don't think it's fair to come in with someone else's plan. My hope is that a principal comes in, well, I'm going to say this, anyone who applies for a school like that probably has it in their heart. Right? This is not going to be an easy career move. And so I'm hoping to get a beautiful candidate that just wants to drop their heart and loves children with, with special needs and knows what to do. So, but I'm also very grateful to Janice Von Arx for coming back. She was a great administrator and she already agreed to coach whoever, whoever takes on that role.
Thank you. That's very informative. So I'll start Serena and we'll move around as I see your hands up. Go ahead, Serena.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I'll put on video. I'm, I'm dropping kids at sports. So I just, thank you so much for a presentation and all of the information and knowledge you've shared. I was just hopeful that as a community based organization that provides early care and education, I work for Educational Enrichment Systems. We serve about 1,300 students annually, ages zero to five. I'm, I'm wondering how we can best either pilot something or partner with San Diego Unified to talk about, for like parent choi, to support parent choice and just to support the transition from preschool to transitional kindergarten. We would love to be more involved in, in the efforts like we have in San Diego Unified where our sites are to like hand off the students, if that's appropriate, to give like informed knowledge to the transitional kindergarten students, or sorry, the teachers and the kindergarten teachers. So I'm just wondering if there's a possibility for partnership. It's in alignment with the San Diego County Childcare Blueprint that just got adopted. So it really is, the county's already voiced interest in it. And I just think it, and when we're talking about measuring students and students that come in with IEPs, I think the earlier, like you know, you guys all know this, the earlier the better, the earlier prevention. So I just think it's a really neat opportunity to partner and we would love to be part of that. I'll be quiet. He told me to be quiet now.
But I do just want to, Serena, appreciate the work you're doing and the work you've been doing at EES over many, many years. In a previous life, I worked at Jewish Family Service. I'm only partnered with EES on a kindergarten readiness initiative. And so I know that you understand that it's not just about students, getting kids ready for kindergarten, but also supporting families as well. And I know Dr. Bagula will share more, but one of the things that the board recognizes, thanks to the insight of our leaders is the importance of transitions. So that transition from preschool to kindergarten, the transition of elementary school to middle school and from middle school to high school are really, really critical and something that we have to be very intentional about. Because when we get those transitions right, kids do much better over the long term. So thank you for offering the partnership and I'll turn it over to Fabi to say more.
And I'm just going to say yes to any partnership. So I'm a big believer in all of the collective. And I think it's going to require all of us. If we're really going to educate all of these children, all, almost 100,000 of them, we're going to need all of us together. And so I know that I want to make sure that it's easier for community members, for community organizations to reach out and say, how might we partner? This is something that I think is necessary. We are the village. So I'm going to say yes. I don't know how easy it is, Serena. I love that your children-
It's so easy. I'm going to, we're going to just, I'm going to get your contact information. It's going to be so easy, easier than what I'm doing right now. So thank you, thank you so much. I'm going to turn on my camera before I, but thank you. Turn it off. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you and your willingness to partner.
Okay, Linda, go ahead. Williams, Linda Williams.
Thank you. Yes, I was very excited to hear a number of different things that both of y'all shared. And as I retired after, from San Diego Unified after 38 years, K through six, and a huge chunk of my career was, was with multilingual students, learners and, you know, doing the assessment for the language proficiency in a number of the schools where I served. And I am just thrilled to hear about your Center for Support, the, or Centers for Support with Wraparound Services, including social emotional. And I think that is just, you know, a heaven sent gift, if you will, for students who are at a point in their school careers where there are so many uncertainties. And I, I'm wondering, and I'm just going to continuing a Facebook conversation, wouldn't it be awesome to use this as a checklist for how are we doing in creating a beloved community in order to make sure that the bases get covered and stay covered for some of our most fragile learners? Now that would also include special ed students, but of course, the whole student population, right? I love it. That is exciting. Okay. So I guess, oh, and then another restorative justice practices, a question is, I know that way back when we started talking about this in 2013, the goal of not having the usual referral forms, that you have a restorative conversation that has to happen before any child would be considered for suspension or heaven forbid expulsion. How are we doing? I try to keep tabs on that and support and encourage, but how are we doing on implementing restorative conversations and practices and restorative justice instead of suspensions and expulsions? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll say, good to, like so many familiar faces. Good to see you, Linda. Asking all of those great questions. And like you, we're very excited about our newcomer center, about all the wraparound services we're able to provide. I'll let Fabi take the question around restorative practices. But I can tell you, the board actually, just a little bit before I joined, adopted a restorative discipline policy that reflects much of what you described, Linda. Right? Recognizing that it's not about shaming children for what they've done, but really understanding what they're going through, working both with the perpetrator and the child harmed to address the harm in a restorative way, which isn't to excuse bad behavior. They don't do that, but it is about not creating more harm through, through the discipline policy and through the way students are disciplined. So I'll let, let Fabi talk about that. I do want to just give a shout out to the state of California. As we think about wraparound services, the state has invested in community schools. And this community schools model, and I shared, we have about 25 community schools in San Diego Unified. The community schools model actually provides us with funding to think about all of the holistic things that students and families and communities need. So at some schools that are experiencing high, experiencing high levels of food insecurity, for example, it means there is a food pantry on campus and we partner with organizations like Feeding San Diego to bring food and other supplies to our schools. It may mean a clothing closet for families who can't afford clothing. It may mean legal services for families that are navigating the immigration process and a variety of other services. And so we are doing really exciting work and we're leading on the work and we're proud of it. And also really grateful to be in a state that has invested billions of dollars, recognizing that it's not just about what happens in the classroom, but also what happens outside as well. So we can't take all the credit for that, but Fabi, you can talk about restorative discipline.
Yes, but actually I wanted to also bring up two examples for our multilingual learners that I'm also really proud of because I think it's progressive. The first one is when middle school students, and actually there was someone that spoke at the board last night about a new California rule. I'm not, I'm going to, I digress, I'm going to bracket that. When students, when English language learners arrive into middle school, they tend to have to take more English acquisition classes. And so the ability to take an elective is a little, is removed. Now you can imagine being 12 or 13 years old, 14 years old, going into middle school and not being able to take an elective. And so we are developing electives to teach English through electives. Like we can still teach language acquisition through electives. You can still be in a theater class.
And I want to just underline that, because I want to make sure everybody's clear. So historically, what we've said, what the state of California has said is if you are still acquiring English, if you are not proficient in English, we're actually going to penalize you and say, you don't get to take band, you don't get to take art, that elective, that enrichment, that thing that makes you excited about learning, we're taking away from you so that you can learn English. And what Dr. Bagula is saying, we believe it's both, right? How can we do both? That every single child deserves both irrespective of whether they're proficient in English or not. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
So that they'll all skip to class?
Yes. Then the other one, it's still in pilot form. It's still only in one school because it's a longer sort of pilot and it's a very different way to address language acquisition, especially in high schools. So one of the things that any immigrant has done, and I'm going to say wherever you come from, is you end up being a translator for your family. You end up being an English for your family. And so we're saying, what if we welcome them in high school and instead of having to take remedial classes or English language- And instead of having to take remedial classes or English language acquisition classes, we partnered with UCSD to say, what if it's a translation pathway? What if we're acquiring language and at the same time acquiring a skill set, which they're already doing? But at the end of high school, they actually graduate with a certificate. And I'm going to say, they make about seventy to seventy-five dollars an hour. And so they can potentially come back and help us, especially in those hard-to, to staff languages. But I wanted to show, like, your bilingualism is so beautiful that you're gonna leave our high school, being able to actually go and work and be able to immediately. So it's still in pilot form at one school. UCSD is all in. And so we're making sure that we're taking a look at how it's looking because I'm going to say this, it's moving slow because there's a lot of belief systems about it. And I'm going to say, I'm gonna continue pushing on it because the children are already doing the translation. We're just making sure that their language becomes a voice of advocacy and then they leave with a career path. To get into the restorative justices, there was one, one thing, Linda, that happened this year, is we really take a look at the whole thing. And so we have an equity and belonging department that took all of the restorative justice practices, the handbooks, the referrals, to President Hazen's point, really thinking a look also at victims. Like, how are we making sure that we're protecting the students that are actually being harmed as well? We understand there's a restorative, but was there a relationship to restore in the first place? And so making sure that happens. We also made sure that we had more, more allocations of restorative justice practitioners and counselors. And we also continued to offer training. But I'm especially proud of the complete refinement of all of those policies. And it was done alongside school leaders, teachers, and also students. So this was something that I'm actually very, I'm very, this is something that I have strong in my belief system, is that I'm not smarter than all of us. And so it requires all of us to come together to really take a look at a plan of action or an idea. And I'm gonna say interrogate the plan of action and idea. And then sometimes when the group gets quiet, I'll even say, okay, let's argue with everything we just said. Because we need to be able to see it from multiple perspectives and develop a very robust plan of action moving forward. And so I appreciate that as teams go about with any refinement or any planning, they understand that that's something that we do. And so we have multiple points of entry with different community members, like I said, teachers, administrators, students, and we bring them together to make sure we get that feedback. So thank you for that question, Linda.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ruth? Catlin, go ahead.
Hi. So, I'm a volunteer with Jewish Family Services and Catholic Charities. And, and through that have met a family with a child at Whittier. And I, I just wa- wanted to give some feedback from perhaps the perspective of a family, or at least a family advocate. You know, one sort of in the weeds kind of thing, but I think it could be important, is that what, is that there was a, supposed to be a meeting of family members or parents to have feedback into the search for the new principal. But it was only accessible to families with access through an app called Teams. And I myself could not figure out how to get on that, except through the chat. And I don't think most families would figure that out. And, and, and there were no other families that showed up to that meeting. So I, I think the idea of switching to Teams for, you know, for staff level is an entirely different question than to, to use it for family outreach. I just don't think it will work. The families have, through the pandemic years, become accustomed to Zoom. And, and I, I think,
Thank you.
That's some feedback that could be helpful. Then also, again, from the experience at Whittier, I don't believe, you know, because I do watch the emails that come in from the school, that the families were informed of anything except for the change in the principal. So the fact that, that at least early in the school year, children weren't going without the level of, of IEP services that were in their IEPs. I feel like the families need to know that that's happening. Maybe that it couldn't be avoided, but at least the families shouldn't be surprised that there is no speech therapy for X number of weeks. And so that, that's my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is really important for us to know. And I do agree with you on Teams. We kept some Zoom licenses and I keep saying, where are those Zoom licenses? Because we need them. They're getting in the way of, of certain family groups. For example, Zoom has a mechanism to translate and Teams does not. So I do agree with you. And thank you for the feedback on communicating with families. I'll make sure to connect with the area superintendent after this meeting. So thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, thank you for all you do.
Okay, Burl? Burl, you there?
Could you describe the two different types of diploma and whether they're both geared to going on to college?
That's a really good question. There are several actual, several layers of diplomas. I know that one of the things that we're really proud of is we have our UCA through G high school requirement, right? We're want, we want to make sure that all of our students graduate with the ability to be connected to our California public education system and continue to have those high levels of achievement. I don't know if you're talking about the essential diploma. I'm making an assumption that you are. That's something that a lot of families, I know we've received feedback. When we have students with IEPs or, or special needs, we haven't had an avenue to actually honor that essential diploma. And so that's.
I, I just wanna add, so not all students with IEPs, right? But one of the things, I'm sorry to jump in, but I know we've heard, particularly from families of students with moderate to severe disabilities, where it was clear to the parents that their children were not gonna earn a diploma that required them to meet A through G UC requirements. What we heard from those families is they still wanted a diploma that reflected all of the work and all of the years of school that their child had gone through, even though they were not capable of earning that A through G diploma. And so that's what this essential diploma is. It is available only for a very, very narrow slice of students based on specific criteria. So I just wanted to provide sort of that framing.
And then to, just to connect it to my prior point, there's been a group of, I'm gonna say educators, principals, family members, and also students, taking a look at what that pathway would look like for, to get an essential diploma, because it is something that we should be offering.
So.
And I guess I'll just.
Can you go to college with that or not? I, I'm asking because I have a, I'm helping a family with a student who's entered the junior year of high school. So they're offering him the essential diploma, not keeping him more than one extra year at school.
I'm going to say, I've seen, I've seen them go into community college and then potentially move on. But I, I don't have enough data to answer that question. Because some of the requirements at the universities are very different for this essential diploma. And that's actually part of the, that's been a part of the controversy of do we, if we're offering this very high demands, UCA three G diploma, then why are we offering this other diploma? But it's like, but it's children needed. This is actually something, we don't wanna deny them a high school graduation diploma either. So that's been kind of the tension point for us.
I would say if, you know, and I don't know the specific child or experience that you're describing, if that student in that family is concerned about whether, if the child is college and career ready and doesn't feel like they are, flag, you know, go to the principal. If the principal isn't responsive, go to the area superintendent. If they're not responsive, I mean, come to me. So I think, I would say to you, you know, we want, you know, Fabi keeps describing, I keep saying, a choice-filled life. If a student or family feels like they do not have, that they're unable to live that choice-filled life, and we are forcing them onto a pathway that they haven't chosen, we wanna know about it. And so I would say, not here, because we don't know the details, but please work through the principal. If that doesn't work, please come find us.
Yeah, it's not in your district.
Ah, it's not in our district. Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. And, and I guess, so that's really helpful framing, because in San Diego Unified, we actually have very high standards for our diploma, right? So we have the standard diploma and then this other essential diploma for a few students. But it's tough. It is tough to graduate from San Diego Unified. But it's because we want students to be prepared to succeed in the world. And the good news is, as you saw, we have one of the highest rates of graduation. So students are graduating at very high numbers, even though we expect a lot of them.
Thank you. Gina?
You're on mute, Gina.
Thank you for your presentation. So I think it was exciting to hear about the goals. My big question is, where and when do we see the metrics? Especially with something.
They've been published. I, you can, they're, yeah, so they were, they were adopted on September tenth. They are available on the website, but I think if somebody from the league follows up with us, we're happy to share them with you. But they are published, they are public, available for your cruising.
Okay. So for example, something like you mentioned kindergarten readiness. And are you still develop, are you developing an assessment for that? I know there are lots of belief systems around whether that's even a realistic goal. So that was a question around metrics. And then I have a question around partnerships.
Yeah. So your, your mouth to God's ears around kindergarten readiness. So Fabi and I were just talking about that yesterday. And we were talking about what has gotten in the way, both at the state level and locally, of adopting a kindergarten readiness assessment. Fabi described in other ways where there's a lot of variability. And when there's variability, there's often not equity. And so like variability we see in other areas, we see it with kindergarten readiness, where from school to school to school, you've got kindergarten teachers saying, well, I'm assessing kids when they come in based on can they tie their shoes and do they know their colors? And you go to another school and it's, do they know all their letters and letter sounds? And what we want is to be able to say, this is the thing, these are the set of things that all children need to know and be able to do when they come into kindergarten. And we wanna be able to assess that and then be able to target supports and interventions based on where they are. We are not there yet, at all. But I know that Dr. Bagula and I share that desire, and it sounds like Gina, you know, it's something that you're interested in as well. And so we're thinking through all of these things in real time, but I think recognize the importance of it.
And my second, oh, sorry.
No, I just, I always like to, like, almost manifest or, or the aspiration is that, that. But there's a lot of mechanisms that we have to get through in order to accomplish a, a universal K readiness whole system. So thank you.
I've done work in southeast San Diego. That was one of our big issues. How are we gonna work with families? Kindergarten readiness, if no one agrees on how to measure that. So my second question is, is around partnerships. And one is a very specific question. In terms of the community schools, is the funding really just going to hire a director at a school site? Or is the funding going to actually fund supports for schools? Or is it up to the director, the community schools director, to go out and put together all these partnerships with, I don't know, their own goodwill? Or I don't know how it gets funded.
I don't know if I can answer that question. I might have to get back to you on that, Gina.
And I know, I mean, I think it's mostly what you're describing, Gina, where we have a community schools coordinator, and there is central office staff overseeing it. And there are limited dollars to support some of the services the site needs. But a lot of the work of the coordinator is doing a needs assessment, understanding what the community needs, collecting data, resource and referral networks, bringing in partners. So, but there are dollars available to provide some support services. But the idea is to be able to build out the infrastructure and really leverage the resources that exist in the community. So it, it's a both and. And I know some sites have, I think up to about five hundred thousand dollars. So it sort of depends.
Yeah. And my, my hope is that it not all go just into a position, which eventually becomes something that then we say to the school sites, hey, if you wanna keep this, you need to use your discretionary funds to keep it, and the whole program goes away. I wanna push for something that I pushed for in the very beginning with Erin Peterson. I don't know if he's still there. But he was heading your community schools. And that is that you consider looking at models like New York, where they've actually worked with nonprofits to be a community school mechanism. And you guys are aware, I've been associated with a nonprofit in southeast San Diego. And this was, I'm, I don't know if it's their dream now, but this was my vision, is that an entity like this, that had already been bringing people into the room and addressing with the theory of change what the needs were, would have been a perfect partner for something like this. So it seems repeatedly, and, and I don't know if this is, I'm, I'm not putting this just on your backs, but the district has a practice of wanting to own everything inside and not necessarily going out. Well, look, I'm gonna say, I've seen that too with chronic absenteeism. There's some great work at the county level. Your school should be participating in that. And right now, it's just a few on a volunteer basis. And that's a huge problem, chronic absenteeism. It's a huge post-pandemic issue that needs to be addressed in a really intentional way. And I would advise partnering with groups that are really focused on that. And I'll stop talking.
Gina, I'm gonna say this. I, I agree with you. I think the county office, I mean, I'm always impressed with Dr. Pallett, but a lot of the county office services and a lot of outside services are so necessary in partnership. I know when I began here just a couple of years ago as deputy, I started partnering right away. I think I called, I called Rita right away. I called the ICAN Network for Chronic Absenteeism. Like, I agree with you. This, this is not, we're not by ourselves. We have been isolated or insulated for a very long time, and I don't think that's best practice. I think it's gonna take the entire community to move this. And so please know that I'm committed to making sure that it's all of us. Like, all of us making it easy, just like I told Serena who left, you know, she was watching her children. It should be all of us and it should be easy to partner.
And I couldn't agree more. And I think it's something we talk about a lot. For many, many years, the, the district has focused internally, thinking that we had the answers to all of the problems. But Gina, just as you described, community-based organizations and community members often know more and better than we do. And so please know that we're sincere in saying, you know, we have to partner. We are opening our doors. We were just meeting actually about community schools with Jewish Family Service, talking about work they're doing with guaranteed income, with positive parenting programs, with food assistance, with housing assistance. We can't do those things as well as they can do those things. And we recognize that. So please know that what you're saying isn't falling on, on deaf ears.
And a lot of what we were doing was actually raising the money to do those things. And then, you know, to have a whole new approach without even sort of looking at what was already out there is just a little frustrating, because it becomes, wait a minute, we, we've already. And we're working with the national, the Campaign for Grade Level Reading. And when the library became the lead on that, they said, we're not gonna reinvent the wheel. We're gonna work in southeast San Diego where the work is already being done. So sort of not redoing it and really looking at what's already out there. I also think when you have outside organizations involved, there is a, a greater, a different level of accountability.
Yes.
Because you have a lots of eyes on this. And while the school district, we like to say that you, you guys are all held accountable for what you do, you, you still get the funding. We don't as nonprofits. We have to show results. So we're accountable at a different level. Yeah, I'm not saying you, you don't have to show results, but you're still gonna get funded. Kids are still gonna get, go to school. My nonprofit isn't gonna get a grant if we're not actually showing outcomes. So there's a level of accountability that's tied into that type of work that I think is worth thinking about as an added benefit when you work with nonprofits.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mary Ann? Go for it.
Hi there. First of all, thank you so much for taking the time to come and speak to the group. We really appreciate that. As you may or may not know, I'm the chair of the Gate District Advisory Committee for San Diego Unified. And I just wanted to go back to the question of the alignment, a slide that you showed between the SBCAs and the LCAP and the goals and guardrails. Because I think there's still a little bit of confusion about the fact that you, you were talking about sort of reducing it down into something that was more compact. But that's still, is three different levels. But that's still, is three different levels and three different timeframes. So SPSA's are annual, LCAP is three year. And now all of a sudden, we've got more goals that are six year. And I'd like to understand more about how those things are actually related, how those goals are related. And like, why do we need to have LCAP goals? And these new goals and guardrails, which are kind of like LCAP goals, but like, not really. That we, we do not understand. So is the purpose to have a one-year short time goal setting for schools and then a three-year one for fiscal planning? And then a six-year sort of a vision? Like, can you explain why we have those three different levels? Thank you.
I also want to add, because when you started asking the question, I thought, no, it's still, it's still a work in progress, right? That this is our first year of disalignment and cohesion. And so I'm going to make a critique, an overall critique. I bet the single plan at school sites still needs more robust community engagement. Like, I'm pretty sure that there wasn't an auditorium full of parents and teachers to develop this. So I know that there's work to be done. And to your point, yes, they all have kind of different timelines. But what was happening, what I saw from the perspective of reading the single plans for student achievement, is I saw a lot of cut and paste in relation. So there wasn't an adjustment of data or a deep analysis or even that piece. And so even though it was aligned, it was, it was, they were trying to align it to an LCAP, the meaningfulness wasn't there. And so, yes, there's different timelines, but there's also now a meaningfulness around like, you will own this and we're going to come and, and check. Now, what I like to say, and I think I said this to President Hazen, is I would love for us to actually meet all of our goals within a year and then have to completely redo them all over again. Like, that's actually something that I would love. That would show a lot of, I'm a big believer in you need data to improve any system. And we've been developing a demeanor of continuous improvement. However, they all sort of have different timelines. And as we meet them, we're also going to make sure that we address what is emerging. So if what emerges is we do really a good job for one population of students, but not for the other, then we're going to have to adjust. And so all of these, all of these goals are adjustable as we see, as we kind of grow and see the data coming in. And like I said, my initial conversation was, I hope we meet them all. And, and then we have to completely redo them and say, wow, we really thought less, really thought, set low expectations of, of ourselves and our students. But I don't know if that answers the question fully. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I would add a part of it, Mary Ann, and I know you've been following the process closely, or more closely than others, is some of it is just timing. So we just this month adopted our six-year measurable goals and guardrails. And last spring, because of state requirements, had to adopt an LCAP. That LCAP was our best guess, based on what we had heard from the community. Out, trying to sort of make this close approximation to where we thought our goals were and, would end up. But it's not exactly the same thing. So some of this is around timing. Right? Likewise with the SPSAs, which were adopted at a different cadence. And so my expectation, I think, you know, the boards and Dr. Bagula's, is that over the next year or two, all of the things will line up. So that you don't have an LCAP that has goals that are different from our district goals, that are district, different from school goals. That you will see the four goals that are the district goals reflected in the LCAP and reflected in every school's site plan. We're part of the way there. We're not all of the way there, but mostly it's because of timing of certain requirements from the state and how long, frankly, it took us to really thoughtfully develop district goals. So yes, you're right to call out that they're not all the way lined up yet.
I'd just like to, to put in a plug again for the community involvement. Because, you know, I acknowledge the fact that, that there was a lot of time spent in the spring on the community listening sessions. But it, it felt a little bit like the framing of that wasn't as helpful to get sort of direct answers from the community. It was very open-ended. And the LCAP was late coming out this year. And the typical process of, of coming to the district advisory committees and presenting it and asking for input did not occur. And so the, the, the community input, in a sense, was truncated, even though you had done all that sort of visioning work that you did. And the SPSAs this year, like I sat on the SSC at my son's school. And actually, each of the district advisory chairs, we all sit on SSCs. And we can tell you that there was no community involvement in the development of those plans, period. So we do need to still walk our talk and work really hard to, to meaningfully involve the community. And it's the doing with, not the doing to. And, and we need to be authentic about that and, and continue to work really, really hard with that. And I just also like to put in a good word for Pamela King in the, in the family engagement department, who is fantastic. And the work that she has been doing on the dual capacity framework with Dr. Karen Knapp and Scholastic. We had a presentation from a couple of schools that had piloted that and saw in their data improvements in student outcomes from schools who were adopting that. So I just really want to put in a plug for that also and say that, please, you know, find the funding, keep that going. It, it's, it's new, but it's, it's doing something. And we really want to keep that, keep that effort going. So, thank you.
Mary Ann, I agree with you. I actually think you, you came to a board meeting to speak and you said something similar. And I was wanting to speak to you about this because I agree with you. The SPSAs, like I, we got them to be aligned. But I also know, like I said, when I heard the trajectory of principals saying, oh, you read them, like, yes, we're going to read them. And now we're actually going to hold you accountable. I know the next step is, how are you developing this with your community? And, and I'm actually going to tell on myself, as someone who taught the course on administrator, when administrators get their credential on family and community engagement, we don't engage families. We, you kind of come to meetings and you sit and get. And so how are we actually co-constructing what this might mean? And that's a whole other layer of transformation that is required. And so I was really disappointed in the LCAP engagement. And I will say this, this as well, that we haven't shared out. And I was actually, why haven't we shared this out? There was a survey that was done by Qualtrics in order to get input for the LCAP. We only had about twelve hundred responses, but I would have been able to use those responses to actually craft some of the strategies in the LCAP and even do citations, and that was not provided to us. And so there was a lot of things like that that I know need to improve in this process. So they're aligned, yes, but now there's all the other layers of work to actually build on the quality. The quality is still not there, and so that's something that we're seeking.
Yeah, and I'll just throw Dr. Bagula a bone, which is to say, she's only been on the job as super, interim superintendent for about twenty-four days. So she's working hard, I know, to get this hold on.
Patty, do you have a question? I know your hand's been up for a little while. And I see yours, Susan. Patty?
Yeah. Hi, I don't know why my camera is not coming on. There you go. Patty Kalai, I'm one of the school liaisons at MCAAS Miramar for the Marine Corps. As you're probably aware, there are seven school liaisons between the Navy and the Marine Corps that service San Diego Unified. I'm also a parent of a seventh grader in the district who's been here since kindergarten. So I serve as that capacity too and get all those parent emails that I pass on to my coworkers that don't have kids. Question for obviously our military families. When you were talking about the talking points for today, you mentioned early learning, special education as two of the topics. And I think these are the, the ones that we probably have the most issues with, with our military families in that they miss UTK deadlines. I know next year the date's going to, you know, more schools are going to have more spots for UTK, so that may not be an issue. And then also with special education, if nineteen percent of the district is special education, I would guess a lot of our, I don't know the percentage, but a lot of them are our military families because they're placed here in San Diego because the access to Balboa. So we have some of the higher level needs, special needs students here in San Diego that are military. So with the new leadership, I'm just wondering what your vision is for military families? Since we were, the last numbers we got were about eight or nine thousand in the district.
I hope that we can talk some more. Because one of the things that, and I'm going to say, one of our area superintendents, Dr. Steve Dorsey, has been working really hard to be a really great liaison with all of our military families and welcoming them in. I think there's a level of improvement that we can do, especially with military families that have separate timelines and deadlines that don't fit ours. And so we're trying to adjust all of those. I've actually said, if we can actually say we're San Diego, we're a military city and this is the military district for them, like, what are the adjustments that we need to do? I am currently facing some bureaucratic red tape with that I, and I, and I'm sorry, but I actually said this the other night. I'm like, I am the red tape. Come on, we should be able to change these timelines. So please know that we're looking at that of like, how do we welcome? But how do we ensure that timelines are adjusted to welcome these families? And to also make enrollment easier, because I know that's also been difficult, choice easier. I believe we had an admiral asking us for his eleventh grade son coming to Patrick Henry, and we told him no. And I was like, what? We are going to say yes immediately. So please know that we have to adjust some of our own rules that we've created in order to be more welcoming to our military partners, and Dr. Steve Dorsey's helping us with that. But I actually want, it feels like right now it's only been like a one-on-one basis. And I want to operationalize it and create a process of welcome for families. So that's on my enrollment to-do list. But I'm facing some, some red tape that I'm trying to cut through.
Well, I can tell you, Dr. Dorsey's been amazing. He's not my area superintendent in any of my four clusters, but he's met with all seven of us. Got, you know, some of our concerns. He actually stepped in for one of our generals' family who couldn't get a spot in Scripps Ranch. And so, yes, I can definitely say that Dr. Dorsey has made a huge difference. But being that I've been in this role for thirteen years now, it's taken a while for us to get someone's here. And so, of course, you know, we're here just, I have some of my military families that are very disappointed in the special education system in San Diego Unified right now. And, and just, you know, the lack of support with aides and, you know, one-on-one, things like that. And so that's kind of, you know, some of the schools that are more highly impacted. Obviously, with, you know, kids being in and out, every day there's a child, a new child or a child leaving. And so we, we know that it is, it is a struggle, but we're here to support the families and see what we can do and be an advocate in the district as well.
So Patty, and that's, so I'm glad that you've had good experience with Dr. Dorsey. I don't want it to be pivotal on one person. Like, this needs to be a whole systems change of how we actually welcome military families. And you should be able to receive that level of service from anyone you speak to. So that's what I'll be working on. And I'll probably reach out to talk to you a little bit more about some other points of tension that you described.
It's nice to meet you. Welcome.
Sue, did you have a quickie? Go ahead.
Okay, fine. Had to get the silencer off. First, hi, Shayna, good to see you. For Dr. Bagula, it's wonderful meeting you. I was a school board member for twelve years. Professionally, I'm a social worker from Columbia who used to work with child, children and families and child guidance clinics and family agencies. And it's wonderful to hear about the focus on wellness. That's Susan Davis and I helped get the health center at Hoover High School way, way back in history. We were both social workers on the board at the same time, which was very cool. And I'm hoping with the community schools, I'm assuming that some have resources that others don't have. And I'm hoping that they'll share with each other. Like, if a family needs a resource that's at another community school, that family can be referred to another community school. I have a bunch of things. I'm just going to go through them real quick. Regarding the last military person, my husband was in the Marine Corps, so I understand all that. And in my district, we had a lot of military families. Special ed is a problem, but Penny mentioned special ed at a particular school. I know from people that still come to talk to me that special ed is a problem throughout the district. We're very short-staffed and IEPs aren't being met. And I think that's something that really needs a lot of help. I don't know how you're going to do it, but I know it needs a lot of help. A number of years ago, maybe, I don't know, Shayna, you would know, about half a dozen years ago, Patrick Henry and I don't know how many other schools chose to eliminate a lot of advanced courses. And people I know pulled their kids out and sent their kids to private school. I'm asking, is there still a functioning seminar? And are we meeting children with gifted, gifted children's needs? Because I consider them special needs in a way also to keep them focused and going to school with joy. I know the seminar, as it used to be, I don't know how it is now, has saved a lot of kids and kept them in school and kept them in public school. But I don't know the situation right now. And do you want me to go through all my points and then you'll come answer, or do you want to do them one at a time?
I know we're almost at time, so maybe if you want one more and then we can.
Oh, run through. Okay. It sounded like you said, Shayna, that TK was only three days a week?
Every day.
It's every day?
Every day.
Okay, great. I was a little worried about that. And San Diego Voice and Viewpoint has been for years, super negative about San Diego Unified. I don't know what their problems are. They say San Diego Unified's not transparent, blah, blah, blah. I feel they, they've got a viewpoint that's their viewpoint. It's not necessarily real. But I hope that people are reading this stuff every day. And they're so negative about our district. And I hope that the district can do something about coming to terms with them. And I hope it's possible. And my last question was about cell phones. I'm assuming we're going to hear something about cellphone use at some point.
Well, I can take that one because that's a real quickie. Actually, just talking about it to a couple of news channels yesterday. So the governor just signed a bill into law requiring all school districts to have policies that significantly reduce and restrict cellphone usage on campus. What I can tell you is that San Diego Unified is about five years ahead of the governor. We've had a policy that restricts cellphone use. Our students are not allowed to use cell phones during the school day, except for high school students who are allowed to use phones during lunchtime. And we do take phones away and require parents to come get them if they need them. One of the things we recognize, and it has come up in this debate and discussion, is, well, what if they're needed in an emergency situation? And of course, we recognize that in an emergency, if a parent needs to reach a child, often a cellphone, it is a useful way to do that. But I can tell you, we have a good policy in place and we're committed to reviewing and revising it, working with students and families to make it even better. So that's an easy one. I can also tell you, you mentioned Patrick Henry. While there were discussions about eliminating some advanced classes, that didn't happen. There was feedback from parents around that. Because we recognize that it's important to have rigorous instruction and honors and advanced courses available to all students. In addition to college courses available at all of our campuses. And so, yes, a couple of years ago, that sort of bubbled up, but that hasn't happened. And then I think Dr. Bagula can quickly speak to some of the other things as we wrap up.
The quick thing also about cell phones is we have a really beautiful, big representation all group, the Student Board Advisory Group. And I spoke to them this, this week. There's about two representatives for every high school and a few middle school students. And I've asked them to actually help us la, not only launch this initiative, it's already launched. And I've asked them to actually help us not only launch this initiative, it's already launched. Like I said, I was at a middle school this morning where they already have a no cellphone policy, but actually to study the variation and the variability of what that might look like. So I want to see this really studied by students because I think it impacts young people. So that's one thing that we're currently doing. As in regards with transparency, I think that we can always do more. And so I'm a big proponent of like, I, I like to actually put everything out there. Even when there's conflict, I'm like, we're talking about the conflict. And even if I'm embarrassed, I'm like, we're gonna talk about this because otherwise, we're never going to actually get anywhere. You would hate to watch a movie with me because the whole time I'm saying, why don't you just tell them? You know, you could, and my husband says, and the movie would be over in 10 minutes. I'm like, I know, but like, it's silly for us not to talk. And so I'm a big believer in that you should be over-communicative. You should be actually communicating everything. And then you should also have, I'm gonna say it, the receipts. Like, what is it? I, I still aspire to this. And so this is something that I want to make sure we do, even with our goals and guardrails. There is a website that's gonna be developed, Shayna already launched it today. So there's work being done. So that Gina, you can actually access it from a separate website that kind of keeps track with our monitoring. But I would also like to show the money that's being invested. And so I think that as taxpayer stewards, we should be able to very quickly see how much money is being invested into what strategy? And what is the outcome that it's yielding? So the outcome that it's yielding is gonna probably take us a little longer and to do because of the mechanisms. But I actually think the money should just be very public. This is taxpayer steward money, this is not district money. So how are we actually investing it in our students? In regards to special education, it is a huge issue. And one of the ways that I think League of Women Voters can help us is we actually need more funding for our special education programs. And it's something that we constantly advocate for, both at the state and at the federal level. I am very mindful that we have two brand-new executive leaders in that department. And one of the tasks that I know I gave them when we were hiring them was, how are we going to transform how we deliver services, the continuum of care? And ensure that we're making, you know, not only, I, I don't like to say compliance with an IEP, but actually making sure that our students are thriving in, in their school setting. And so it's a big feat. And as I said earlier, they're developing a three-year plan of action. But I also know that they have an uphill, uphill battle. Because you're right, we need more funding.
So a few things. I do have a question, but I don't know that you can answer it quickly. I'm quite aware from students that I mentor, that there is a problem on campuses of alcohol, drugs, and that are going on, and smoking. And I don't know whether, I presume you're aware of it, whether there is going to be some direction as to how to control this better.
I will write that down to talk to our high school group.
Okay. I know, I know that's going on. So a couple of things, I really wanna thank you both, it's been incredibly informative. What I'm going to ask, and maybe I'll talk to Amanda, is I would love in about, I don't know, we'll have to talk about it, six months or a period of time to, if possible, have you come back and update us? Because you've talked about a lot of things that you are focusing and wanna do. So I'd love to have you come back and share where we're at with some of those. And as I say, I'm not sure of the timeframe, whether it'd be six months or what, but we'll talk about.
The end of the school year would be a good time because.
Like in April, May, maybe? Because I know the school year is ending. Okay, like April, May, and I'll, we'll kind of set that up. And whether we do it.
I would say, so as people who are data-driven and data-oriented, by the end of the school year, we'll actually be able to have a full year's worth of data to be able to say, this is what we try to do, and this is how kids are doing.
That's great, that would be really good. Whether we do it by a Zoom meeting or whether we do an in-person meeting, it might be kind of nice to do an in-person meeting and call it, the league could set that up. The other thing I wanna let people know is this is being recorded, this whole program that we did. So if you either wanna hear, hear it again or have other people that you'd like to share it with, they can get it through the Zoom, the League system and go look, and then I can pull it up and, and listen to it. So, so I thank you again, it's been super informative. Anything else anybody wants to make, quick comment, or we're good? Yes, I know we've gone over. We're good?
Just a huge thank you. Wow, thank you so much. This is Serena, I'm still here, you know, barely, luckily you're not gonna see my, but thank you so much. All of your candor and your wisdom and your willingness to partner with community-based organizations and parents and families. Thank you so much, I really, really appreciate it.
I might add something, and that is that I'm the observer for the school district. So observer reports for each of their meetings goes on our website. So learn, learn what the board is doing every couple of weeks. Shayna's busy.
Well, thanks, everybody. Be with you and look forward to coming back in the summer.
Sounds great, thank you again, everybody have a good evening. Thanks so much, bye-bye.